All right. I'd like to welcome you back to our in-person regular work session for June 7th, 2021. Everyone, nice to see everyone back. And we've got to see each other through Zoom, but it's not quite as realistic as this. So everything is going well. Thank you all for joining us and get moving. So Mr. Bruce, your call room, please.
Sure. Mayor Lowry.
Here.
Councilwoman Grimm.
Here.
Councilwoman Eggleston.
Here.
Councilwoman Noakowski.
Here.
Councilman Cobb.
Here.
Councilman Rodewold.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cook.
Here.
Seven members present.
And tonight's allocation will be done by Councilman Cobb. Cobb, stand clear. Right over there.
Dear every father, help us and give us the strength to do what's best for our citizens and watch over what's done for the citizens. Also, watch our first responders, our fire and EMS, our deputy sheriff, our military, in Jesus' name we pray amen.
In the pledge, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, where justice stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And together. We better use the name.
I think that was the best one in over a year. Yeah. That was the best one in a long time.
Yes, it is.
All right. So we've got a couple of minutes of communications tonight. We have Dirk LeBois, excuse me, LeBois Ridge and Gork from the Clark County Grants Coordinator. So Dirk, you're going up.
Yeah. So everyone, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we've been brought up to council, thinking at the last meeting about that, CDBG, CARES Act funds and some potential projects for the city. So Dirk needed to do a pre-application pretty quick, so I did consult with the mayor and vice mayor on that pre-application. So he is here to talk to council a little bit more about what they can and cannot do with this grant and then any questions that council may have. So Dirk, you want to go ahead and take that podium? You're more than welcome to. I have reached out to a skate park designer out of Los Angeles because a lot of them seem to be out West, so I did submit him some information. But it'll be ultimately a council decision how you guys want to move forward with this, whether it be a shelter house or any other project that may qualify under here. But we do have a pre-application in place. So without further ado, I will let Dirk take it over and council, this is your opportunity to just have open and honest communication with our guests today.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Could you lead off with anything or?
Sure. Just call me Dirk, forget the last name, it's complicated. But if you put the Dirk and the Van Gorp together, that's Dutch farm country in northern Iowa.
Okay.
So that's where I'm from. So up there, they have a sign outside of town that says, "If you ain't Dutch, you ain't much." Always tried to figure out whether they're joking or not. At any rate, yes, I'm the community, I'm the grants coordinator for Clark County Community Development and working closely with Randy and his team on a number of different things. And just recently, probably, I don't know, about a month or so ago, we got notice that there was still some funding left from the original CARES Act that was allocated to Ohio. So if we remember during the COVID-19 crisis, CARES Act is the one that dates back to April or so of 2020, completely separate from the new American Recovery Act funding and stuff like that. Well, it took the state about, some cities like Springfield get it directly, you know, they're called an entitlement city. The county works with the state as what we call an allocation county. And of course, New Carlisle is one of the cities in the county that we work with closely. So we got notice that they still had funding available past the first grant that we had submitted and received. And some of you may have read about some of the programs that we're supporting, Rocky Horse Public Health, Second Harvest Food Bank, also a couple of agencies that deal with domestic and sexual violence in the county. Are the recipients, our county is responsible, but there are implementing partners, sub-receipients. Then the state said, "Well, listen, Clark County, if you're interested in submitting a second application, we still have money available." And at about that same time, the federal government loosened some of their formerly quite rigid guidelines and made it a bit more flexible. You can't do everything with it, but they opened up some other possibilities with what they called somehow tied to COVID-19 pandemic, okay? And one of those was the creation of new social spaces or recreational facilities in cities like New Carlisle that meet the criteria for HUD block grant funding. And I think most of you in New Carlisle probably know that you are eligible as an overall city. And then, of course, there's neighborhoods within the city that are also eligible. So I immediately thought of New Carlisle because, you know, I grew up in towns about this size out in the Midwest, and I knew you had some parks. And some of the ideas that were presented in an outline by HUD were things like creation of facilities for greater social distancing, for recreation that was, you know, too crowded to be safe during times of COVID or anything similar to COVID. So that's what I brought to Randy and he brought to you and ideas, I guess, became skate park and possibly a few other things, but I'll let you speak to those. And on the basis of that, we submitted basically a very general, and when I mean general, the first step is what the state calls a pre-application. And New Carlisle was one of three that were presented. The other two, if you're curious, are United Senior Citizens and also an agency that does housing, you may know of them, Neighborhood Housing Agent Partnership in Springfield. And those were for HVAC, air filtration systems in facilities that the public has to access for training and other purposes. So what is not allowed, I would just, I have to caution everybody because I get a lot of requests from across the county, is anything that is considered as the normal conduct of government is not allowed under community block grant funding. So it has to bring a benefit to a community block grant, eligible neighborhood or city, in this case, New Carlisle, the city is eligible under HUD guidelines. So I leave it at that and you can ask me any questions. They have accepted the pre-application and they are ready to open a full application for the three projects that we submitted pre-applications on. It's competitive funding. I cannot 100% guarantee you. The pre-application was for $400,000 and they accepted that as a fairly accurate estimate. If it goes a little above, a little below, the state's not going to, you know, penalize us for that in the full application. Full application is a bit complicated, but I'm sure that I can work with Randy and his team and fulfill everything. We have been quite successful in Clark County over the past year and a half or so, gaining some new grants, some additional grants. I feel positive about this, but I would caution that it is competitive, okay? For about 45 counties in the state.
Sir, have anything you want to start with?
Yeah, have a seat.
Okay. I have a couple. So this, it can be broken down into multiple projects within that spending amount, or something?
Yes, it can.
So you could, you know, and I'm saying, for example, addition, shelter house, skate park addition, you know, shelter or whatever maybe, it can be broken up.
Correct.
Okay. And I think one of the questions that come up to Mr. Bridge, one of our Zoom leads or over the phone, I can't remember which way it was, but you know, when I think about a grant, you know, obviously it would be smart, in my opinion, to spend on something that is really big, it would be hard for us to find. So you know, we talked about additions to the shelter house with a kitchenette, it'd be great, I think a lot of people could utilize that, but that's not a real heavy price tag. It's something we could do, you know, on our own without, without any help, I think, for the most part. But you know, my initial thought was the pool itself, not, I'm not talking about the structure, but the inner pool, we said, after talking with you, the pools probably wouldn't fall into.
No, the pool is not going to fall into that category. Yeah. I think there's probably a lot of communities that wish that it did, but then HUD would end up funding a lot of public pools.
Right, of course.
You know?
And there is too. So, but what about like smaller buildings within the pool, like a shelter?
Yes, absolutely. A shelter, a new shelter house, an improvement to a shelter house, that is definitely, yeah, to create additional space and safety. Yeah.
Okay, you mentioned three, and I can't remember if I'm just overlooking something or I missed it. Your initial discussion of skate park addition here or second shelter, what was the third?
I think there was only two.
Could be something as simple as additional seating, you know, picnic tables, benches, whatever.
I was just, I was just wondering what you said. I thought there was three that we had made out too.
Yeah.
So, okay. That's my first few questions. Mr. Vice Mayor.
Dirk, would this possibly encompass the widening of the road and the parking lot out here also?
Not this particular grant, no. They're not doing any type of street or road improvements under this type of grant. There may be other grants coming online that deal more with infrastructure, and that's something that you might be able to propose under a future infrastructure grant.
Mr. Grimm.
So how does this work? Do they decide whether or not we get it based on what you've done and then we decide what we're going to do with it or the other way around?
No. Have to decide before we make the full application of which specific projects you're interested in. And then I have to provide the full details and a cost estimate for each of those projects. So if, for example, there were two, something connected with the shelter house and then your skate park, those would be the two projects for New Carlisle. And I have to have full details and information on them to be able to submit the full application.
Let me get prepared. I need a second.
This is probably a stupid question, but what is LMI?
LMI is the Housing Urban Development Department terminology for low and moderate income, okay? So all community development block grants have to qualify on low, moderate income. And the overall community of New Carlisle as a whole, city of New Carlisle qualifies as LMI city.
Thank you.
You good, Ms. Evans?
Yep.
Mr. Rodewold.
One question in regards to the skate park. Would that grant cover the cost of moving the skate park as well or just enhancing the current park? Because we've had discussions of moving the park itself.
I would say that, I mean, as long as it doesn't involve the purchase of land.
Yeah.
If it's on land that the city owns.
Yeah.
I don't think it would be relevant where you improved or built a better skate park.
Okay.
Okay.
Anyone else? My two cents on it, I like some of the ideas, I mean, I think throwing a large chunk of the skate park, I mean, I'm all for the skate park because it's got a little bit of business down there and there's some equipment, you know, that equipment has been there since Bob then who was the city manager, so I think it's, it's service.
Fast, it's prime.
I mean, you could use some fixing, it would be nice to upgrade it. I don't know if, you know, spending the full amount on the skate park, that would be a stretch for me. I'd like to dice it up a little myself, you know, maybe see what we can do with the skate park to make it better. I would love to see an addition onto this or whatever would be the best way to do it. I know a lot of people that rent the shelter house out here for Thanksgiving and things and birthdays, you know, we can't provide a refrigerator to keep our cave and ice cream cold, so that would be a really, you know, Thanksgiving, you know, want to be able to keep something warm, a microwave, something simple, just a real basic kitchenette added on. And I think that last time we discussed that, Mr. Kinnear, we had some rough estimates and it was in the ballpark, I think, of like $50,000 just to add on to this area here. And then, you know, I'm sure a few grand to, you know, for some basic appliances and things like that, so. Yeah, look to the addition here, took some towards the skate park. And then if there was anything left over, whatever council thought, is the, there's the shelter at the back into the pool and it's getting pretty rickety and dry rock and starting to come down. And then there's a section where you could probably add another, which would increase pool revenue, where they could book more parks. But that's, that's my two cents. Those three areas.
Well, whatever projects the city council, it is council.
Yes.
Yeah. City council comes up with, I double check, I don't hear anything, but I don't think the state would accept on the basis of the pre-application, but I double check, like I'd say, okay, shelter house, we mentioned shelter house, it'd actually be an addition to an existing shelter house that would also encompass a food preparation area and just make sure that that's okay, you know, with them, okay?
Yes. Mr. Grimm.
Do we have a deadline of when we have to have all this together?
Well, again, as soon as possible. I have to submit all three pre-applications that have been approved within the same full application. I can't submit them separately, so one will hold up the others. I'll be honest with you, yours are probably, you know, the more complicated and much more expensive than the other two. And it is competitive funding until funds are exhausted. Now, I know that the state, it's probably going to take them a little while longer to award out the rest of these funds, but I can't be sure, you know, they're not going to tell me. So the quicker the better, the sooner the better. Not that I don't have anything else going on, but I'm committed to trying to get these new projects approved, just like the three quarters of a million was approved for the other four agencies earlier, because I think there's just some great opportunities for Clark County and within Clark County specifically for the city of New Carlisle with some funding that appears to be increasing and may continue to increase for community development in the future.
Then we need to get moving.
Right. Well, that was my next question, I don't know who wants to answer it. So let's, you know, depending on what council wants to do, you know, whether it's A, B, and C project or if it's all on one project A, we need, as a city, do we need to get the total cost on our own to say, you know, add this on to the shelter house and then get that number to him or, you know, all three projects or however it was diced up? Is that?
What I, what I really need to happen is you guys need to decide how you want to use the grant, so therefore we can run with it. And if that could be decided today, that would be great.
Need to prioritize.
Yes, you do, because we, I have to, like I said, I've already started working on the skate park, we wanted pictures and stuff like that. The shelter house, do you do an addition here or do you do a separate one? You know, if you're going to have a grant that will pay for a whole brand new one, that can have a kitchenette in it, now you have two revenue streams going on. Skate park does need attention. However you guys move forward with the pool is up to you guys, but I don't, we would have to expand the current shelter at the pool for that to even qualify. If we're not, we just can't use money to rent it, it has to be able to expand.
If you justified it as being currently unusable.
It's not unusable.
Okay. I'm just, you know, I'm saying what if.
We're going to put in probably upwards of $100,000 next year for that bladder in. There's a lot of money that's gone into that pool these past couple of years that maybe the pool needs to have it sit out this round. I mean, we've done a lot of improvements at that pool and I fortunately don't think that this particular grant money is going to be able to go into the pool because you're not expanding it, you're not enlarging it. It's already utilized, what Dirk said, but ultimately that's up to council. But council needs to sit down and talk about the future of that pool at some point in time, instead of just put money into it, put money into it, you know, what is council's long-term decision on that pool? If it is to keep it open for probably 10 years or not put the liner in and close it next year, or however you guys choose to do it, move forward, we got to watch how much we're putting in there without knowing the future of it. So skate park, shelter house, I think that's where you guys should focus your attention on too, namely because of timing. And then two, like I said, how can we expand that shoulder back of that pool, make it worth?
I have a problem.
Oh, congratulations.
Sorry. The next one over the chief, the electronic, just push it down a couple of degrees. There you go. Thank you, sir. It'll.
Needs to go up.
Yeah.
It needs to go up.
I have the same thermostat in my house.
Thank you, sir. Sorry, I just wanted to be over here. I'm sorry.
Oh, no, no, that's it. So I'm just like, we, we got to find ways that's going to be justified, spin that pool. I mean, I don't know how we're going to expand it, I don't know how you're going to do all that kind of stuff, but I mean, from a administrator, it's, council needs at some point in time to sit down and have a heart-to-heart again about that pool, about where is it going to be in two, three, five years, especially if you go ahead and put that bladder. If you don't do the bladder, where is it going to put the pool? Do ahead and go with the bladder next year, how's that going to impact the pool? But.
Sir. Local resident has been demolishing a building and discovered that it's a log cabin from back when my kids think I was born, the 1800s. We would like to move that here. Would that be covered?
I don't believe that that would qualify under this guideline, no. They're definitely looking to create additional space, you know, or opportunity for safe outdoor, you know, type of exercise and recreation is what they're trying. And I think I read about the cabin that you mentioned. Personally, I spent 25 years in construction and it's fascinating to me, you know, the old cabins and I've been part of restorations on some many years ago, but not, not under this grant, but I don't know, possibly Ohio Historic Preservation Office? I don't know, but it might be something to look into. Yeah.
What?
Ohio Historic Preservation.
Council asked to motion me as a whole, I can't do it off one, but the council would like me to look into that.
I would move that we ask Mr. Bridge to check, oh, that's right. This is a first session.
I made a note.
Good, Mr. Grimm.
I'm good.
You want else? All right. As far as the pool, so the back shelter, oh, I'm sorry, no, Mr. Cobb, you're right. Go ahead.
Can that module be also used, we got to get Wi-Fi, get interconnect here and that?
Yeah, it's not going to qualify expense, but we're working on American Rescue Plan funds for that.
All right. Just one question.
And maybe we look at the shelter house for the pool for that funding money opposed to this, because I think it's going to be a long stretch to get this approved through the state at the pool. So I'm not trying to be negative against the pool, it's just, we got to put our money where it's going to be best used for this particular grant funding opportunity. This, this kind of money doesn't come around very often. Like I said, we can update, change up boards of the shelter house or the pool in our own funds. This is, this is, you know, money we need to really take advantage of, that's free and like I said, doesn't come around very often. If you look at, you know, especially the additional shelter house, I'm suggesting things that's going to bring revenue to the city. You know, minus the skate park, we don't charge a fee to get in, but we can assume that if we have increased attendance to our skate park, that may lead into increased attendance at the pool. But I'm trying to get in things with this grant money that's going to bring us revenue opposed to cost us money, if that makes sense. So that's why originally we suggested the shelter house, because we do, this shelter house is booked on the weekends, non-stop. I mean, it is booked, we turn people away.
Well, and that's, that was going to be my next point, if we can't use it to say rehab the back shelter house at the pool, which it is, it's not unusable by any means, but it's getting to a certain point where it needs some serious repair. But the part where the old racquetball court was, the forestry law, it was just straight concrete that really doesn't get used, you could erect a new one there to expand space, thus generate more revenue for the pool, which we all now need, because that's usually the complaint, doesn't generate enough revenue. Because with this current shelter house intact there, you can only put, especially in hour parties, when you do in hour, in hour parties at the pool, you know, you've got to leave some open for your daily day customers, but then they block off sections for private parties during in hours. You have a whole other ability with picnic tables, you can then book more in hours parties, giving you more revenue, which is the same concept as what we're doing with this. You know, different.
No, a little different. Pool's three months, the shelter house is 12.
Right, but it's still revenue generating.
Yes, no, I agree, I agree.
Mr. Grimm.
$400,000. We can make some good improvements to the skate park and build an awful darn nice shelter house.
Oh, I agree.
With a kitchen, three bedrooms, gizzi boat pool.
Did it say three bedrooms?
Yellow Springs has recently did their skate park, and Dirk, correct me, I'm going off memory on the email, I think theirs was around 5,000 square feet.
Yeah, because they don't have any space in Yellow Springs, so it was only about 5,000.
So our current one's about 5,000 square feet too, but they, they've got nice, very nice cement, I don't know what they're called, bricks, what are they?
They're all concrete, brown.
Bricks, yeah, stuff like that. It's nice, I mean, it is, it is nice. It is.
And have you reached out to Yellow Springs about what that cost them?
It was around, theirs was, I'm going off memory here, 250 to 300, because it was 45, 45, it's 45.
About 45.
45 to 60 dollars per square foot for a skate park.
Yeah.
How big, I know it was in here, how big did you estimate ours?
About 5,000.
I guessed off of the county GIS system that it looks to be about 5,000 square feet. Now, you may want to expand that.
Yeah, and I did. When I fixed it today, we passed it, if you're walking up to the skate park, if you look to the right of it, there's a whole patch of land that we can actually expand onto. So we will never be able to get a skate park out of our own funds, so that's going to take some time to do, you know? The pool, we have been, April's done a fantastic job, Mike's done a fantastic, that pool's got a lot of improvements the past two, three years. It's going to get another major one next year with the bladder, you know? So when you look at this, of course, we're starting to think about the pool, but it's not logical to do anything with the pool, because like I said, we can have something here, take our existing skate park, which is heavily used, and get rid of the metal and get rid of, it's just nasty down here, I was down here today, and then get a second shelter house, you know? And that is, that revenue stream is going to be huge, because now that one over there has a kitchenette, you can charge a little bit more, we may have to reduce this one a little bit, you know? But on the weekends, both of those more than likely will be filled up.
Ms. Evans?
Okay, so Madison Street School will be down this summer, right?
Yeah, it'll be starting out here soon, very soon.
And we still own the land. Why not move the skate park and build a shelter house there?
Then you would need an extra park, but that really is something I would recommend council leave there for a couple of years to see if we can get somebody to develop or kind of put some houses on it.
The skate park's also, it's kind of loud, you know what I mean? Well, I don't know how loud.
Oh, yeah, concrete.
Right, that's the same, it might be quiet if it was concrete, because with the metal, you almost mistake it as thunder sometimes when you're down there, but yeah, if it's concrete.
Definitely not. Okay. Well, let me ask you this, and I just thought of it, it's like, I know we've always talked about moving that skate park, but say we left it where it's at, and if April has a private party, is that something that we can close off and include access to the skate park as part of private, as part of the cost for the private party pool? I don't know, I don't know if people try to go over there a lot, I don't know what they do.
They go back and forth.
They go back and forth. So would that mean enticing things to upgrade the skate park and then say you rent out the park, the pool for a private party, that you get access to that solely as well? I don't know, I'm just thinking inside the box. I'm not.
Your cost factor is always going to go up anytime you have to start providing, you know, toilets and things like that in a completely new location. I mean, the advantage of adding on to someplace where there are certain parking, you know, access, toilet facilities, things like that. And I think that $45 per square foot probably assumed that it was on bare ground.
Yeah.
You know, so you can bring it down below that, you know?
Would they like to see if, say, if council wanted to do a shelter house and a skate park, would they make us do restrooms outside that skate park?
No. I mean, I assume that at this current skate park, there's something available someplace. Nothing?
There are restrooms, but it's designed with skate park.
Is it open all the time?
We walk in here and see them, but it's supposed to be a walk like this one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sure. Okay.
Also, just as far as the land down there, if you're looking at the skate park, like if you're on the road looking at skate park, there's the trees to the right, is this, I'm assuming the city owns going into that?
Oh, we go clear in the woods, that's, I mean, how we looked at that this morning.
Because that's, that was going to be my next question, if we expand the skate park, it's obviously going to take up land, which is where, you know, there's already short enough parking down there in here, but you get a full skate park and then a summer pool, house with swimmers at the same time, so that we have room to make more parking.
Well, let me ask you this, because I was down there today, one thing I was saying, that basketball court, is that a full-length court?
Yeah.
That's pretty big.
Because, because what they could do is come across and expand the skate park and cut that basketball court in half and just leave a half-court basketball. I don't see people running up and down playing full-court press there, you know? Can they bring it over to the left towards the pool and then, you know, like I said, cut that basketball?
Right.
But I'm an engineer, I'm an architect, all the way around.
And then be able to have access.
But the thing about it is, is there's space to work with down there, there is, because parking is an issue, especially on busy days.
Any other questions for Dirk?
I don't have anything further for Dirk, would we apropos to possibly schedule a work session within the next week or so, so that we can hash this thing out?
You're walking probably some direction to the net, correct?
Yeah, we gotta get the ball rolling on this, because it's first come, first served. And it's gonna take a week or two to do get the formal estimate back from, Swoon, Randi's gonna be dealing with that in LA.
Yeah, whoever you decide to get an estimate from, has to be a formal, professional estimate, and it has to follow, Randy knows the guidelines with his team, you know, the CDVG estimate guidelines in terms of labor cost and things like that. Like all community block grant projects, like the Madison Street School, or Fenwick Drive, or whatever, it's a project that the state requires a county contract on behalf of the city of New Carlisle. So, but it's, on the other hand, the partner's responsibility to come up with the cost factor, okay? And then, based on that, it goes out to bid, you know, when the project is actually done.
So that's what I was kinda asking, I was probably, so whatever we decide, if we see or just a, whatever it may be, we gotta get a cost to submit to them, is what the cost of?
Yeah, and once that formal estimate is included in the application, we have to stay within that.
Okay.
Yep. Mr. Brooks?
Do we want, if we're saying that sooner the better, do you wanna schedule a work session for later this week?
Do we need a whole meeting on it? Does council just, council, is everyone just doesn't know how they're gonna move forward, or is that something we're gonna talk about after in the regular meetings at that time, or?
Well, that's what I was thinking, since, you know, we've got the basis information, we've heard some ideas and projects, we can let it stew up until we get into the regular meeting, and then if we feel we need another day or two, then we can make a motion to do a meeting in the regular session or something.
Yeah, except, well, if we do it on this week, probably like Thursday, sooner the better would be best.
Well, that's what I was thinking Thursday evening, for a work session inviting Mr. Kitco, and, because I think you're gonna have to have him available in order to find out what your limitations are as far as...
I don't need Mr. Kitco, we, it's something we can just, we can do. I would prefer to not have another evening meeting, but if that's how council wants to do it, we can. I just, I don't know how much time we're gonna put into the discussion.
No, I mean, because ultimately, I mean, the skate park's gonna cost three to three-hundred-fifty-thousand, so...
Well, I don't know if you're gonna make it.
I mean, if it's seven thousand square feet...
Right, five thousand square foot's around ballpark, two hundred thousand, so if you just go, yeah, seven fifty, then you're gonna say...
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then, you know, improvements to the shelter house, I would earmark for the rest remaining, whether it's an addition or just add a kitchenette, some upgrades.
Oh, yeah, definitely, for sure. People have asked me for years.
You're right, you're right. Hey, sorry to interrupt, you brought up a good point, if we do have a special meeting, if council wants to do that way, it's gonna take, it'll probably be in the next week.
The earliest, I think, ad run is Thursday, that is if...
Tell you what...
Well, we can always, we can always, once we get to the regular session, we can always go into, I mean, we're into down other business, we can discuss it all night long under other business.
So in the city management, once we get to it, I'm gonna start the question special meetings and talk about the American Rescue Plan, if it's for after the twenty-first, to give us a little bit more time, because we haven't got the money yet. I'm saying, first comes the show, we can do it Monday evening, but...
Well, let's see what happens in the regular session, because that's where we're gonna have to make a motion for a meeting anyway, we're gonna do it, so, let everybody, all the information we've just got, spend for a little bit. All right, anything else for Dirk?
So if they wanted to do, like, a separate shelter out at the pool, like, take, leave the existing one we have there now, and then build a new one to expand that, that's fine.
That's fine, yeah, you're expanding space by adding another shelter house.
But don't touch the current one we have. Unless we expand on to that.
You could add on to it, absolutely, yeah. I mean, if that's your, that's your decision. It doesn't have to be freestanding, you're adding, you're creating additional space.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Anything else, Mr. Bridge?
No, I just wanted to clarify that, so we can have all the...
How big is the racquetball court, do you remember? Did you guys measure it?
Well, no, I mean, I'm, no, I don't believe it is, you got the four-square courts, remember using the racquetball courts?
Yeah.
And then there's some space entering behind that, so...
Okay.
Anyone else for our guest? Thank you very much, sir, we appreciate the time.
Thank you.
The information, very important, thank you.
You folks will see me around New Carlisle quite a bit in the coming weeks, I think.
All right, let me jump back here. All right, moving on to...
Dirk, have a good day, bud, thank you.
You good to move forward, Mr. Bridge?
Yeah, I am, thank you, sir.
All right. Citizen of the Year discussion, Mr. Vice Mayor brought that up?
This has been something that has been talked about a while back, I think, a year or two years ago. There was also a, I guess the word is an email from a young lady that recommended three ladies. In researching what other cities are doing, they are basically taking from the citizens a recommendation for Citizen of the Year, and then making a choice, and then an award somewhere during the year. Peggy and I have been back and forth on this a little bit. I don't know whether we wanna go ahead and possibly recognize those three ladies that have already basically, and I will say, been nominated, and then go on to a further nomination for later in the year, or hold off until the following year for any further nominations, which we'll be able to.
Any discussion?
I think we should go ahead and recognize three, and then town hall is usually first of the year, so we can take nominations for that.
Well, we can, that's our council, if they, council wants to report with it, then we'll just do a motion, regular session, and do so. But, yeah, I like that, yeah, I don't know, they brought it up last, but, you know, we do, when we do our town halls, maybe, I don't know if someone said that we could do it through the city's Facebook page, or the website, people could submit, you know, John Smith has done these good deeds, and it just compiles a little list, and we print it out towards the end of the year, and announce it at the town hall, or whatever it may be, so, yeah, like...
I just think that the three ladies that were mentioned need to be recognized, they've done a lot for the city through the pandemic, so...
All right, well, it sounds like we kinda got anything else on that, Mr. Bridge?
That's all I've got on that, if you want me to go on with the veterans' banners.
Kinda interrupted, sorry, he threw me off. What was the final outcome of the Citizen of the Year?
We'll bring it back up.
Oh, okay.
So they're gonna move forward with the suggestion of the three ladies, but the time being...
Gotcha, all right, sounds good, sorry.
Okay, the veterans' banners, primarily this was discussed a couple of years ago, brought up by Mr. Shammy. I think it's a good idea. I've been in contact with Christie Smith at Sign Smith, and she, I'm sorry?
Studio Ten.
Studio Ten, excuse me. I don't catch up quick with her, but she has done a preliminary banner. And as you can see, this is basically a two-sided banner. The approximate cost is going to be about forty-five dollars each. She recommended that if we choose to do this, that we possibly could put together a form, the form would be filled out by the person wishing to purchase the banner. A digital photograph would have to be accompanying this, along with the payment direct to Studio Ten. And I have no problem, I don't know how many people we might be interested, but I already know of three banners that have been told to me that they will purchase. So I'm not sure how many we would have room for in the downtown section. Are we looking at the possibility of twenty, twenty-five, fifty?
Is that where council wants them? I mean, there's a lot of, I mean, because we got the flower pots coming in downtown, flag season's gonna impact some of that, you know, so, but, I mean, is this something you guys want spaced out, be them all in one area? I mean, we got like, I think ninety-seven poles up and down the street.
Also, I think, like, the farmer's market uses some of them too.
Yeah, that's true, yeah.
Well, again, this is not gonna be, you know, almost September, I think your farmer's market's gonna be pretty much over at that point. I just think it's a valuable situation to recognize our veterans, the time that they serve. We used to have a veterans' park up in front of the old city building at one point, I don't know what happened with that situation, but I think this is a valuable opportunity, and we need to go forward with it.
Yeah, no, it's, you see a lot of the other towns are going to, well, really all-sized towns, but they look really nice.
They look really nice.
What would be, I mean, do you think the easiest way would be is to, can we, Mr. Bridge, would it be possible to, council, or whatever, it'd probably be easiest to work with Christie with this, if she were gonna do the banner, if she could come up with a form, the information she would need, obviously, you know, the picture, the name, and all the information, if she came up with a form, could it be left up at the city building on pockets, you know, and that way, you know, we could put out there, hey, if you'd like one of these banners, feel free to stop by the city building, pick up a form, we fill it out, and then that, you know, customer takes it to the Studio Ten, and it's pretty much...
What about putting the form on our website?
You can do a PDF on the website, yeah.
Yeah, that's easy. And she did a good job in these, and it took me a minute to look at, saw, and notices, but I guess there's an option there for medals, if they've won a medal too. See the purple heart? Kind of blended in with me, but there's a purple heart on one side, which is cool, so if the veteran has bought multiple, you know, medals, that can be on as well. So I think with something like this, I think council should move forward with it, I mean, some things you guys wanna look at, though, is, you know, what's the term, like, if someone gets, well, how long is it up for? You know, is that, is it a month, is it two months, is it three months? At some point in time, it's gonna get damaged, have to be replaced, or is it just, it's going to serve its useful life?
Yeah, yeah, that's a good idea.
Well, I would be more inclined to keep it up during the spring, summer months, and take them down during the winter months when it's gonna get ravaged the most.
So is this something that's gonna come back every year, or is it, they have to pay it the forty-five dollars for every year for it?
I would say that these probably could be utilized...
Multiple times.
Multiple times.
As long as you're not staying...
We should still have some, you know, we'll use it for a minimum of three, because, you know, four or five years down the road.
And we can develop that and put that on the form.
Sure, absolutely.
Because we have to also have a cutoff date.
To work.
This is gonna have to be into Sign, Studio Ten, by a certain date, in order to guarantee that we're gonna be able to do this. And I think, again, I spoke with Mr. Kitco, and he said there was very few problems in putting these on in the polls.
No, you know, as I said, if we have multiple things going on, I think, but we can skip, I mean, I hate to say it, but, because I love our downtown with all the flags, flags on the poles, but is this something that we have to get into, every other has a pole, has a flag, and then something has a banner? But those are all, those are all good problems, you know, those are great issues to have to think about working through. But my experience with what we're doing now, with the memory plaques we have on the trees, those things are starting to fade, they do not last, you know, and every couple of years we have to go to the city, ask the Zuberk Maus money to get all that stuff replaced, you know, so, I'm probably looking at some way, shape, or form to replace our current plaque program. I have a thought about how I'm gonna do that, present to council, maybe we get bricks, and we get them engraved, and put it in the ground, because, like I said, those things made out, sunlit them all the time, and some people steal them and they get pulled up, so, we see the repetitiveness with how much we gotta replace those, so that's why we're saying something like this, and maybe a three-year term we have it, then after three years, we're not responsible for it anymore, I mean, the ins and outs of the program essentially, council will have to decide what they want, but I don't think you can honor people more better so in your town than having their name on a plaque downtown to serve our country, so...
Yes, sir. Sounds like they just need to do some fine tuning, maybe work out some policy and...
I'll take care of it.
Maybe we could research what other cities are doing, kind of, to work with.
First, she's able to, yeah, this is my idea, how long will it last?
I mean, if they're made out of vinyl like we use at the ballpark.
That's vinyl.
Yeah, I mean, three years is about their life expectancy. I mean, as long as you don't let them set out, we hang ours up in mid-April and take them down right after the season, and a good sign will last three to four years, before it starts to really show some wear and tear.
I'm sure she could put the air pockets in, too, where the air goes, so it'll rip.
Anything else on this one? All right, moving on, city managers' report, and the comments from members of the public. Anyone has any comments, please go to the podium. And we'll need your name and address for the record, please, sir.
Good evening, Dan Martin, 306 South Broadmore Boulevard over in Springfield. I just wanted to introduce myself, I believe I've met a few of you, but I wanted to introduce myself, I'm a candidate for the Clark County Municipal Court position that Judge Moody vacated, along with two other candidates, and I spent some time on the Springfield City Commission, about twenty years, so I've been in a situation, you've all been, of having to look at these different issues, and look at budgets, and approach all the different issues you have to deal with in a town, so I've walked in those shoes, and I appreciate what you're all doing, and I just wanted to let folks know about what I'm doing, and that I wanna be able to help the community, try to deal with some of the issues we have with crime, especially among our young people that come before the municipal court. We have a lot of eighteen, nineteen, twenty-year-olds that commit these misdemeanors, that are frequent visitors with the court, and I look at it as really kind of the last good opportunity to maybe turn some of those kids around and get them on the right track before they go down the path of more serious offenses and getting into more serious problems. So I would really like to be able to use the resources of the court to be able to not only, you know, punish people when they need it, but also to help turn people around and get them going in the right direction. And certainly, New Carlisle and all of Clark County, you know, has a stake in that, and is a court with countywide jurisdiction, and I want to, if I have this opportunity, be able to talk with folks in the community, leaders in the community, to try to figure out what we can do to make things better in the justice system, and to better serve the public and the people that use those services. So, again, thank you for your service and what you're doing here, and be glad to talk to any of you at any time.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming up and visiting. Council, other members?
I, uh, I found a USDA grant for a city community composting.
Let me stop for a minute, Mr. North Castle, just for a second, I wanted to see if you had anything else for him, let's save that one for under other business, so we can keep things in order, is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, which, because we gotta go through the legislation discussion, then we'll hit the other business. I thought it was related to, yes, thank you. All right, moving on, give me your reports on the municipal resolutions, ordinance of the temporary session, other business, legislation discussion, Mr. Bridge?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the legislation that is either introduced tonight or up for action is as follows, we don't have any resolutions, so up for vote tonight, it was introduced at the last meeting on 517, is ordinance 2021-13. That is an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the New Carlisle Public Library regarding the story walk program, and what that is, is a partnership that myself and council wants to do with the library, to install a series of, basically, a story walk along our bike path, and what they'll do is like twenty-six posts, they'll take a page of the kid's book out, put it in there, kids walk, they read the story, and they go to the next post. We also have up for tonight, a vote is ordinance 2021-14, that is an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Clark County, Ohio, and the sheriff of Clark County, Ohio, for the incarceration, maintenance, and care of prison... of prisoners prosecuted in the New Carlisle Mayor's Court. Um, since council will be starting a mayor's court, that is one of the many legislation pieces that we have to pass, uh, but that is simply establishes an agreement with, uh, Clark County to house our prisoners. Uh, we have for introduction only tonight, ordinance twenty twenty-one dash sixteen. That is an ordinance authorizing the city of New Carlisle to lease property owned by the city. Uh, that'll be voted on at the six twenty-one meeting. Uh, we have ordinance twenty twenty-one dash seventeen, that is also just introduction for tonight, that we voted on at the six twenty-one meeting. That is an ordinance supplementing certain appropriations contained in the New Carlisle City Ordinance, uh, twenty-one dash, twenty twenty-one dash oh one. Uh, we have, uh, an emergency ordinance tonight, that is ordinance twenty twenty-one dash eighteen E. And what emergency ordinance is, is it allows us to introduce and vote on legislation in the same night, also with an immediate effective date. Uh, that is an ordinance, did I already read that? No, an ordinance authorizing city manager into, into agreement with the Board of Clark County Commissioners for the twenty twenty-one road waste resurfacing contract and declaring emergency. So, that is that we do, uh, about every year with the county, uh, to resurface some of our roads. And what we have on store for this round of funding is Cambridge Court, Sunset, Deerfield, and South Scott for Madison to Lake. Uh, and the last ordinance we have tonight is introduction only. That is an ordinance amending chapter two eighty of the codified ordinances of the city of New Carlisle, Ohio, for the purpose of establishing a mayor's court.
Thank you very much, sir. Feel free to take a drink. All right, council, any discussion on any of these items that Mr. Brooks just looked for? All right, uh, now into other business, Mr. Novakowski, I'll let you.
Um, I, I, uh, found a USDA grant for a city community-run composting initiative to reduce food waste and provide soil for gardens, and, um, it's a minimum, it's a huge grant. I think it's a minimum of forty-five thousand, maximum of ninety-five thousand. There is some money that will be required from the city, but I haven't been able to get to that yet, because we have to get into the application to see what that is. But I would like to know if there is interest in council, from council, for me to continue investing in this.
Now, that, would this be mainly used for the community garden up on, um?
Could be made, could be made available to anybody in town.
Yeah.
And, um, I mean, I found some.
Have you had any locations in IDO to, to put this?
Well, I was looking today, and I found some small, they'll hold a cubic yard of composting, uh, which is, by the way, one ton of compost. And we could put these in neighborhoods, and people could put their stuff into that, and then it could be taken out and used in the community right there, or it could be given to gardens elsewhere, whatever. But the, the idea is to get people to think about how they're getting rid of their waste, because food wastes in particular that go into landfills are an issue, because they don't decompose in the proper way, and they create methane, which is part of the problem that.
My only concern with something like that, I mean, we already have a dumping problem in New Carlisle. I'm not saying they would, but I think someone might take that as a, an opportunity to throw things that shouldn't be put into a compost, if, if they're left unmonitored or unsupervised, um, if we just put them randomly throughout the neighborhood.
I mean, they could be put in centralized locations, or two.
Yeah.
I mean, we certainly could do one at, do some at Westlake.
So, we're talking multiple bins?
Yeah, multiple.
How, how big are, I mean, is it up to us, not the signs?
It would depend on how we did it. If we did it in a centralized location, we could have something that was much bigger. Or if you wanted to do it in, say, the park or something, they have small ones that are this size.
Okay. Well, do you mind, if, if you mind, since we're, we got three minutes to go, and we would need a restroom break, can we continue this in the next meeting under other business again?
Sure.
Okay, great, thank you. Uh, then, who else, who else we can get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, second.
First by Mr. Cobb, second by Mr. Grant. Just pick it back up.
Councilwoman Eggleston?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Novakowski?
Yes.
Councilman Cobb?
Yes.
Councilman Rodwell?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cook?
Yes.
Mayor Lowry?
Yes.
Councilman Grant?
Yes.
Welcome to your journey, accepted seven minutes.
See you in two minutes.